Meetings back in session, thank you. In just a moment, I'll introduce Mr. Ellis Hankins with the Mercer Group. Mr. Hankins will discuss the town manager search process with us and a timeline for that process. Following his presentation, I'll give council the opportunity to ask a few questions, or as many as they wish. Following council comments or questions, I will open a public hearing. A question and answer session for members of the community to address Mr. Hankins if they so wish. Ellis Hankins. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, and council members and other folks who live in this great town. I'm Ellis Hankins. I think when it says Senior Vice President, it means old Vice President, but I'm glad to be here. I want to spend just a few minutes, there'll be less math in this, so that's the good news, but a few minutes talking through with just a few slides, the process that you have engaged us, and primarily me, to assist you all with, with your search for your next town manager. It's a great challenge, but it's a great opportunity for you all and your community too, to select a professional, very capable town manager who is a good fit to work with this council and your staff and serve the people in this community. So let me tell you all a little about me and about our firm before I go further. I grew up in North Carolina, born, raised, educated in North Carolina, down the coast in Wilmington. I am a lawyer, but I've gotten over that, become more of a manager over the years. I worked most of my career for the State Municipal League that Southern Chores is certainly a member of, the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Eventually became the executive director between stint in and out of private law practice. I retired from that day job six years ago. My joke is, I now have too many part-time jobs, five, three universities, one consulting firm, one law firm. I'm a town attorney, just to keep my hand in to municipal law, which I've dealt a lot with over the years. I'm the Spring Lake Town Attorney, y'all know where that is? In Hamlin County, right beside Fort Bragg, right near the Pope Army Airfield runways. I have to say, you all are a bit better behaved than that governing body, and that's good for you. The firm is the largest public sector consulting firm in the country. We have offices in 12 states. There are a good number of us who are retired city managers, two of us are retired State Municipal League Directors, police chief, retired fire chief, other folks in the firm who have backgrounds in local government mostly, including HR and other fields. And we do a lot of executive searches for cities, counties, state municipal leagues, public risk pools, and other public entities every year, and I enjoy this work. Let me give you all, before I forget to do it, my contact information. I should have put that on one of these slides, didn't do that. I'm happy to hear from anyone about this, particularly here in the early stage. I spent a lot of time yesterday talking to all but one of you all, and we'll have that other conversation in just a few minutes, and then I'm going to sit down with your department directors to talk generally about what it is that folks believe you ought to be looking for, in terms of background, qualifications, experience, and characteristics of a manager. And I welcome comments from anyone. Some of you all gave me the names of folks in the community that ought to call and just ask some questions and listen to for a while, and I look forward to that. But my email address, and it's easy, it's ellis.hankins@gmail.com. Half the folks in Manio have that email address, and they certainly were not shy about offering comments when I assisted the Manio Board about a year and a half ago, their manager search. So I always welcome that. Also, before I forget, I have two requested action items of the council this morning. You all have the draft job ad that if you see fit to approve it, I will start placing tomorrow to formally begin this process. So please, as we go, take a look at that, you've seen it before, I think. And a draft timeline that is very detailed about my recommendations for dates that are major steps in the process, including a council meeting to consider candidates in a closed session after we have received all the applications, and having a lengthy discussion with me about the relative strengths and weaknesses of candidates. Then another council meeting in a closed session to conduct interviews with the candidates you all have selected. Then a second interview if you see fit, and then your council meeting eventually at the near the end of this process, where the council votes in an open session to appoint the person you have selected as the next town manager. So with whatever adjustments you all want to make, please approve that timeline before I leave here, and then we'll all stick to that timeline in this process. So how is this search process going to work? What you're trying to do, obviously, is select a town manager who will be the chief executive officer on a daily basis, and on your behalf and under your policy direction and your supervision oversee the provision of town services, hire and supervise and direct town staff under priorities, the policies that you all have adopted, and be the person in charge that you look to on a daily basis, and that your citizens look to on a daily basis, as the manager, the administrator, and the chief executive officer of the town government, under your supervision. So our job is to work for you and assist you all, give you our best professional advice based on our experience, and help you recruit, we will reach out and actively help you recruit a sizable group of well-qualified candidates, and provide good advice and assistance to you all along the way. I told the mayor yesterday that our experience is, we may get as many as 40, 50 applications. It's not unusual, we never know. And I will tell you, what tends to happen is that the best candidates, think about it for a while, they do some research, they talk to folks who might live in this community, or folks who have worked here, or in other ways, find out what they can about your community, and then eventually they will call me, which I welcome, and we'll have a conversation. We tend to receive a lot of the well, the best qualified candidate applications near the end of the process, after folks have done their due diligence and thought about it, and probably called me and talked once or twice. But our first step is, if I'm here right now, the start is to help you all decide upfront generally, based on comments, your own thoughts first, and based on comments that you hear from your town employees, your citizens, about what it is that you all decide you ought to be looking for, in terms of those things I said, background, qualifications, experience, and personal characteristics. After I finish listening to everything you all say about that, I will go keep working on a recruitment brochure. This is the one that I did for the town of Emerald Isle, town manager search about a year and a half ago, and toward the end of this, there's a lot of information, pretty pictures about Emerald Isle, and before I forget, I need some photographs of Southern Chores that y'all would like us to include. These are not stock photographs, except for a nice family on the beach in Emerald Isle, or somewhere. But there's a list of bullet points in here that, you know, in some ways, most of them apply to town manager jobs in most cities and towns, and the characteristics and the work style and the approach that tend to make managers effective in their work, but a lot of those in this brochure and in everyone that I do, in this case came, and always do come, from comments that we hear, from the elected officials and town staff and citizens in the community about what it is you ought to be looking for. So then this recruitment brochure, after you approve it, becomes the recruitment tool. We disseminate it far and wide. I will reach out and make a lot of phone calls, and I'll send this recruitment brochure to everybody I can think of who either are potential candidates, whom we want to encourage to consider applying, or folks who can tell us about other folks, rising stars in the profession, that maybe have gotten to the point where they are capable of doing this job well, and finish getting up the learning curve to become an effective manager in a community like this. But it also becomes a roadmap for you all to look back and see what, and remind yourselves what you said you're looking for here at the beginning of this process. And that'll be helpful once you select the candidates to be interviewed, and you listen to those folks in interviews, this is your roadmap. So the process is this, before this week is over, I'll place the job ads, and they're obvious places to post those ads, the League of Municipalities, Association of County Commissioners. We're not limiting the scope, this search, to North Carolina. We'll place it with ICMA, International City County Management Association, that will get the attention of potential candidates with management experience, not only in North Carolina, but in Virginia, South Carolina, Georgia, particularly folks in coastal communities, and we want those folks to be aware and to think about the opportunity. So once we have this recruitment brochure, I'll put it to bed, you all approve it by about the first of March, we'll start disseminating that, and then I will not just sit there and wait for applications to come, I really will get all the email addresses I can, and I already have a lot of those, to send this to managers mingling in North Carolina, but other folks, and to make a lot of phone calls to actively recruit. We'll keep you all informed of how it is going. We're not going to provide you names of candidates until the end, once we have all of the applicants, and then all of that information is confidential under North Carolina law, but you certainly, you all certainly receive all of it from us with a lot of other information. But generally, we'll keep you informed as we go. A month in, how many applications do we have, and from how many states are the folks, and are we generally pleased at what so far we are seeing? That's the sort of information we'll give you. If you approve the schedule as we have proposed it, the application deadline, which we call a soft deadline, is April 6th, and that means it is not an absolute hard and fast drop-dead deadline, it is a target, and if we receive applications from strong candidates a day or two or three, maybe a week after that April 6 date, we reserve the right to consider them on an assist view in considering them. At some point, it's too late, but it's not necessarily our advertised soft application deadline. As those applications start coming in, I'll begin the process of reviewing them and selecting the ones that appear to be the strongest, best qualified, and meet the criteria that you all adopted. And I'll start calling those folks, just to have conversations. Sometimes you don't really know how well-qualified someone is until you listen to them talk for a while. Sometimes I say I can have a conversation with a potential candidate and figure out after 10 or 15 minutes whether they talk like a good manager, and you hear them say the things that good, effective managers tend to say about the way they do this work. You know, you can't always just look at a piece of paper and know, and I can't develop the confidence that I need eventually to recommend folks for your consideration until I spend some time on your behalf talking with them. So we'll do a lot of that. And then after I finish that process, after that deadline has come, I'll write it down for you all and send you information, the entire list of candidates, you need to see the entire list. But I will send you summary information that won't take you forever to read, get through, and understand, about the candidates we view as the strongest, best qualified for your consideration. It may be 12, 15, 18 folks. We may put it into categories, the ones we view as the strongest, then maybe another list of folks that we also consider to be well-qualified for your potential consideration, possibly an interview. It's our best assessment that we are going to give to you. We'll meet with you in a closed session, and on this schedule, it's about April 16th, nothing magic about these dates, we'll have this conversation, and then you all adjust it as you see fit, and then approve it, and then we'll stick to that schedule. But we will sit and we'll talk after you've had a chance to look at all the written information we've sent you. I will tell you some things verbally that I'm not writing down, that we have discovered. And then your task is to select a reasonable number of what we view at that point as semi-finalist. You may have interviews and then a second set of interviews with some finalists, but a reasonable number. Now, what's that? Well, it's, we suggest that the sweet spot is probably in that five to seven number range. If you select fewer than five, there's a bit of a risk. People tend sometimes to withdraw their application, they accept another job, spouse decides he or she doesn't necessarily want to move, after all, you lose some candidates. And it doesn't always happen, but you'd be surprised how often it happens. So you can reasonably interview seven candidates in one day. You can't really interview any more than that in one day, if you go over that. I've worked with governing bodies that have interviewed as many as 11, believe it or not, which we don't recommend. But nine, for example, is about a day and a half. But so, sweet spot, I think, is about five to seven. That gives you a real opportunity to compare and contrast. You're going to see different people with different sets of strengths and weaknesses, different levels of experience, hands-on, relevant experience, some younger, who have relevant experience but are not yet veterans, but maybe rising stars, and good, smart folks with good management skills, who can readily finish getting up that learning curve, to really being within a six months or a year where you need them to be. Emerald Isle selected, I think, one of those, manager, good manager, good reputation, from North Carolina, who looks younger than he is, he's probably in his early 40s, he's doing well. The Manio folks had their choice of good, strong, well-qualified candidates, made a good choice. You all probably know the candidate they ended up selecting. He's an engineer by training, so that was interesting to the Manio folks with their infrastructure needs and think flooding problems for one thing in downtown. Had been in the private residential and commercial construction business in Hilton Head, then had been an assistant town manager in Bluffton, South Carolina, then had gone on to become a department director for a larger city in North Carolina, Asheville, my wife's hometown. And he and his wife spent a lot of time on the Outer Banks, and welcomed an opportunity to move to this area, and the Manio folks grabbed him, and I think they did well, among the choices, the good choices they had. So before we recommend candidates for your consideration, we will have done a preliminary background check. Talk a lot to folks, Google searches, looking for news stories, and that sort of thing. Most of these folks have a public track record by that point, which will tend to be mostly good, but some other. I've seen situations where a candidate looked good on paper, then you do a little research, and he or she was terminated because of allegations of financial impropriety, or they forgot to mention to us that time that they got arrested, charged with DWI while driving a town vehicle, and that sort of thing. So you can find, and we want, obviously, to find that sort of thing, so it doesn't come then as a surprise to you later. Once you select the candidates that you want to interview, we then will complete a formal, extensive background check, criminal, motor vehicle record. Chief Motors, we're not necessarily going to find every single thing in their record, but we can find most of it, unless it's well-hidden in Nevada or someplace. So, but credit check, they will be dealing with public funds. If there's a bankruptcy in their background, we want to know about it. If there are real credit issues, we want to know about it, and we want to hear an explanation. If there was a severe illness in the family and they had difficulty working with the insurance carrier, that's one thing, that's a good explanation, but, you know, we want to hear that explanation. So by the time you convene to interview the folks you've selected, we'll have the results of those background checks. We like to do those in advance, so there are no surprises. I can tell you about one instance where someone lied to us about a master's degree. That's a no-no. If he or she is going to lie to you about that, they will lie to you about other things. And we uninvited that person for an interview, as you understand. So we'll send all that information to you before the interviews. We will help you select interview questions. We'll give you a list of potential questions I'll ask you for, to add to that, questions that might be on your mind, that might be unique to Southern Chores. And then I'll present that list to you, we have a little process that we use to help you all select the questions, same questions to each of the candidates. You can reasonably ask about 12 questions in a 45-minute interview, about 15 questions in a one-hour interview. That doesn't sound like a lot of time, but I guarantee you, you can get a pretty good idea of who these folks are and their capabilities in 45 or 60 minutes, particularly after I tell you more about my conversations with them. And that proposed interview date is about May 1st. And then after that, you, and in your discussion, you may focus on one candidate that you know is the best fit, that you were particularly impressed with, but maybe there are two, maybe you can't quite decide, but you can narrow the field, you can invite two, more than three, I would say, back for a second interview, maybe one person, you think you found the right person, but you want to talk some more. So invite that person back for a second interview, or maybe, you know, be on and interview some talk in a more social setting, to get to know them, maybe their spouse, if the spouse wants to come and look around the community. So then you select the person. Part of our agreement with you all is that we will help you negotiate the terms of employment. We'll give you some information about salary, what appears to be a reasonable salary range, and give you some advice, but then you give us instructions, and we go undertake those negotiations, so you want us to, under your guidelines. And then, once we strike that deal, and that might involve a written employment agreement, I am for written employment agreements that are clear, that are reasonable, to write down the deal, I'm a lawyer, and I haven't stopped being one. So when you then convene in an open session, you would appoint the person as the town manager, and if there's a draft employment agreement that I have worked with your town attorney on, you would approve the employment agreement, and that becomes a public record, it's available to the public under the state law. And then your town manager, assuming that it is an external candidate, probably needs to give a notice of a month, six weeks maybe. You want, if it's an external candidate, you want that person to leave their current employer, obviously, under good positive circumstances. You would expect the same of your departing manager. So he or she may not be here for a month or six weeks. Then we'd start work. Again, part of our agreement is to assist with transition, including coming back if you want to later, to enjoy more good seafood, and to maybe sit with you in an initial evaluation or discussion about expectations, to get the manager with you off on good foot. So, I don't know, there's, I might get rid of that on the screen. I just say the word, and it disappears, good. So I mentioned this to you, some of you, yesterday. I always recommend to search committees or governing boards, go into this process with an open mind, no preconceived notions, no presumptive finalists. You might know folks that you would like to consider, maybe you met them at a conference somewhere, you've been impressed with a manager in another community. I would suggest to each of you, you don't make that call to them and encourage them to consider applying, let me know, let me make the call, which I'm happy to do as part of our recruitment. But a completely open mind until the interviews are completed. It always comes up, well, shouldn't we hire someone from North Carolina? Well, maybe, but not necessarily. There are all kinds of good folks who work in other states and in coastal communities, up and down the East Coast and that Left Coast, where I was a couple of weeks ago, who might have experience working in public management in North Carolina, but they've gone to another state, or they certainly have relevant experience working in other states that are not North Carolina, but they've certainly dealt with the same management challenges, opportunity and opportunities, and can get up the learning curve, and always bear in mind that we in North Carolina have the best resources for local government managers and other professionals in North Carolina, bar none, compared to all the other states, school of government, where I'm a visiting professor, and other resources are available to help folks who come here from other states figure out North Carolina and to become a successful, effective manager in North Carolina. So don't rule out managers from other states. I guarantee you, because of where we are geographically situated here in Southern Chores, we're going to get applicants from Virginia, we're going to encourage that. I am going to send this ad to some of the MPA programs in Virginia and in North Carolina. I am going to place this ad with the Virginia Municipal League, as I did the Manio ads, just to, our objective here is to recruit a group of candidates who are the best, strongest, best qualified, we can, external, maybe internal, and then work with you all to fairly consider all of them, compare and contrast, as I said, and then make a sound decision at the end of the process. We will keep all the information confidential, and keep reminding you all that that information under North Carolina law is confidential. And there are lots of reasons for that. It's only fair to those candidates, they are trusting you to keep their application confidential, because they might be currently employed somewhere else, and until the time comes when they have that conversation, and maybe he or she informs the mayor that they are being considered, they're finalists, semi-finalists, or finalists for a manager position in another town, they don't want that to become public information. And it helps protect the integrity of the process, obviously. This is your decision, this is a representative democracy, people have elected you all because they trust your good judgment to make decisions like this, with their advice and recommendations, their input. So, that's it. I'm happy, Mayor, as you said, to answer questions, and I know you want to open the floor to hear what your citizens think.
Well, first, let me ask-
First, let me ask Council, if they have a specific question they'd like to ask of you.
Counsel? Anything specific you'd like to ask about, with reference to what Mr. Henkin just told us?
There's one question, I'm not sure that it's a question, maybe it's a comment, but yesterday, well, first of all, thanks for taking the time to meet with all the council folks up here. I think that was really helpful in it, being able to relay to you some of what we're looking for, but also to hear about your process and everything. But as was discussed yesterday, I would really like to emphasize my desire that you talk to department heads here in town. It's not just to get a town history perspective, but also to learn some of those unique aspects about our town that would help you in evaluating those resumes that you're to receive.
Yep.
There's a lot of unique things out here, you know, like the organizations. We have the Civic Association, as I told you, the Chickahaw Property Owners, and the town staff can help you, let you know how the town works, again, to help you evaluate those resumes you'll be receiving.
Absolutely. I have that discussion, line it away from here today.
Thank you for taking the time yesterday. I enjoyed it. That half hour went rather rapidly.
It did. But that won't be the last opportunity either. You all have my contact information, Bonnie does, and I provided my email address. Invite folks to use that, to let them know what folks think.
How many candidates did you get at Manny O' by any chance to start?
Forty-some. Four, I don't remember exactly, but it was a good number.
I mean, roughly, I'm not...
In the 40s. Same with him at Lyle. You never know, to the end of the process. I always get nervous toward the end, but then magically, usually, can't count on it, but usually, strong applications arrived that last week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellis. I'll hold off on asking for a motion to approve the job ad and the timeline. Glad we have it here from the public. This time, a open public hearing. I have two people have signed up. If others of you wish to speak, just raise your hand. First person on this is Ann Schurisma. Surprise, surprise. Good morning again, Ann.
Well, you know, you get an opportunity as a member of the public to speak to your elected officials. It's a good thing to take. Good morning, everyone. Ann Schurisma, 69 Hickory Trail. First, I'd like to thank you and congratulate you on making an excellent choice with the Mercer Group. I've known the name Ellis Henkins since I was a freshman in college. We established that we were in the same residence college. He was a couple of years ahead of me, also in law school as well. But his name for me is synonymous with intelligence, cleverness, accomplishment. He was a rising star back when we were undergraduates. So I feel very comfortable and confident that this is going to be an excellent process handled by experts. And I also think the timeline looks great as well. Leaves plenty of time to develop applications and background information. Mr. Henkins did touch on the relationship between council and town manager, and talking about the town manager as the chief executive officer and as being under the supervision of the council, but I just sort of wanted to emphasize that point, that we do have a council-manager form of government, and that there are statutes that pertain to this process. In particular, North Carolina General Statute 160A-147A instructs that the manager shall be appointed solely on the basis of the manager's executive and administrative qualifications, solely on that basis. That's state law. And then the powers and duties of the manager are also set forth in statute, and the council cannot modify those powers and duties. So you have supervisory capacity, but there's an autonomy in the role too. There's independence, and I think we in the community public like that and want to encourage Mr. Henkins talked about chief executive officer, excellent manager. I think all of you probably know what goes into that. Someone who's a good problem solver, good critical thinker, someone with effective communication skills, interpersonal skills, someone who's a leader, who can be trusted, someone who's honest, honorable, has great organizational skills, who can be held accountable, et cetera, a self-starter, a networker. There's a lot that goes into it, and I think you all recognize that. But I'd like you to keep in mind the stakeholders, the community, and that I think if Southern Shores lacks something now, it lacks a flow of information to the public and communication to the public. I think our website could be improved vastly. One town that does it exceptionally well, I believe, is Duck. Duck discloses most everything. If you're an out-of-towner and you own property in Duck, all you have to do is go on the website and you'll find out immediately that the council's having a retreat today for two days, that they're in the middle of doing their comprehensive land use plan, that they know what their beach nourishment is going to look like. You can access all that information, and I think our town should be doing more of that, encouraging give and take between the town manager and the community as well. I mean, it'd be nice to see the town manager out in the community. I see Mr. Connors driving on the streets in our neighborhood often, but not the town manager. I think there should be some more of that, familiarity with the people in the town, just a give and take there, we so-called stakeholders. Another thing that I, as a community member, property owner, would like to see is more follow-up. We have a code right project that's languishing. More than a year, we haven't heard a word about the revision of our town code, what's happened with that. The last town managed, the last town council authorized the revision of a land use plan. No word about that for quite some time. Building improvements, recycling problems, there needs to be more follow-up, I believe, and more give and take, more public information flow. And all of that, I think, is part and parcel of being a good manager, a good chief executive officer, who knows who his or her stakeholders are and serves them. I was happy to hear that Mr. Henkins is going to give you some advice on salary. I think that we need to be competitive with Duck and with Kitty Hawk, which are our most comparable job markets. Other than that, I'd just like to see somebody who's friendly and has an open-door policy in the town manager's office. So, I mean, what that says about personality, I don't know, but I think if you're a good executive, if you have strong managerial skills, you recognize that, you recognize that you want to be accessible, and you want to encourage people to come speak with you. So thank you very much for giving me the time to share my views.
Thank you, Ann. Welcome to your comments. Joe Van Geesten? Morning, Joe.
Morning again. One observation, and it's, the horse is out of the barn at this point, but the schedule that we just saw for the acquisition of the new manager puts the manager starting no sooner than, most likely, after next year's budget is already going to be approved and ready to begin. And I think that is an abject failure on the part of the council to wait this long to get the process going. This was, this is a critical time planning period, and I think there was a three or four-month delay before any initiative was taken by the town council. Maybe you were waiting for reelection, I don't know, but I just don't think the timing was good. I also hope that, and I expect, and I'm pretty confident, that we will have a better vetting process than we had last time, because I think we got a limit in our last town council member. And I would like for the council and the consultant to strongly consider shorter term in terms of the employment contract, because we lived too long with a failed town manager last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any further questions, Counsel?
No, I don't have any.
This time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the job ad that was presented by Mr. Henkins.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of that?
Can I just ask if, how this ad was put together? I mean, who, I know Mr. Henkins wrote it up, but did you, did you write it up with consultation with staff?
I did. I drafted it, left some blanks, needed some more information, sent it to Bonnie. She provided me some of the missing, and all of the missing information, and made some comments. And I, there's nothing magic about this job ad. I mean, first of all, in general, you just place the job ad to bring the availability of a position to the attention of as many people as you can. There is good, relevant information in the ad, but they will learn a lot more in this recruitment brochure and by talking with me. But any, but having said that, any changes that you all might like to see, something I've left out, better way of saying something, please feel free.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to hear. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Anyone else have a comment or thought, question? I'll call the question. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion to approve the job ad has been approved. A motion to approve the timeline, I'd like to, before we do that, I'd like to make sure that timeline for the meeting in April, April 16th. Is that the same day as our workshop meeting, Sheila?
April 16th is a Thursday.
Yeah, our meeting's the 21st.
Our third is the 21st.
So should we have a separate meeting there, or should we try to combine that? How does that impact your schedule, Ellen?
Mayor and council members, you all can feel free to move all of these council meetings that are highlighted in yellow in this process, two or three days, maybe a week, without doing any damage to the flow of the process. My writing down these dates is arbitrary. I looked, made sure I could be available on those dates, but you know, the time, these stages in the process just came at an orderly time. If you need to move that one or some of these others by a few days, feel free to do that. We can accommodate it.
And can those dates be moved after we get into it a little bit and find out?
Yes, sometimes that's done, but you know, I strongly encourage you all to think now, seriously, about reserving the dates that you approve on this timeline and do the best you can not to change those, because then scheduling can become problematic. I've seen that happen. That first meeting is the one where I come and meet with you all in a closed session about candidates, tends to take about an hour and a half, usually no more than two hours.
It's your pleasure, Counsel. We could combine that with our workshop meeting for that, which would be budget time as well, though, will it not, Bonnie?
So that would be the workshop?
So we probably should go ahead and keep the schedule and have that meeting on the 16th, and then do our budget workshop on the 23rd, 24th, whatever that day was.
21st.
Is the budget workshop probably to be...
Fairly long, yeah, fairly long morning and afternoon.
They normally do. This one's going to be a challenge.
Then I would, I would propose that we approve the timeline as it's been presented to us by Mr. Ellis.
I'd prefer to do it all. I'd prefer to do it all. Is budget typically four hours?
At least.
Yes.
And then this, the 16th is an hour and a half, two hours.
Then you got another two hours, so...
I mean, I'm just talking to somebody who has a thousand other committees. I'd rather lose one whole day than scatter it out. But I'm not going to fight anybody on that.
I'm neutral. We could do a morning thing with the budget and an afternoon thing with the, after lunch the same day with Mr. Henkin.
What do you say? That's my two cents, but I'm flexible with anybody else's.
I'm fine with the all-day.
Well, I'm flexible. I just want to make sure we're giving both, both items the necessary time to do it properly.
The follow-up, you got the May 1st and the May 8th deadline, or days, and our meeting's the May 5th. The May 1st is, we're going to determine one of the two finalists for an hour and a half, two-hour process.
That's, that's most of a day, assuming that you do...
So that's the longest period.
That is.
We can keep that separated, I think, and then the second interview would be May 8th, our meeting's May 5th. I mean, if we combine the April 16th meeting to our 21st meeting, and then we can keep the other separate, I think we'd probably be there again.
Also, I would, according to this, aren't you trying to use some of the interviews from the 16th to 17th, so unless you're going to make your call, do a recording meeting and start the afternoon, because if you reschedule the 16th, that'd be 16th and 17th between the...
Well, no, that April 16th to 17th item is after the council, whatever date it turns out to be, selects the semifinalists. That's me, the consultant, calling those folks and inviting them and getting them. They're not. That's me getting them scheduled for the interviews.
But you would have to change the dates in the...
Yes.
If we move it to 21st, that afternoon, on the afternoon, that'll have to be a close, if I receive this, it's a closed session process.
So you all are talking about changing that, what I call the selection meeting to April 21st?
Yes, sir.
And that works fine on the schedule. That does change some of the later days. For example, we, we need some time to finish the background checks between the time that you all select the semifinalist and your interview date. It is not absolutely necessary that we finish those, but it would increase my confidence level, probably yours. If we have those background checks finished by your interview day, we probably would have time to finish them between April 21 and May 1st, but it's tight.
Well, that being said, you'd prefer to give the 16th a priority.
We rely on that background, background check as another, an outside group that does that for you, or...
It's done by one of our firm's staff members. She happens to live in another nice place, Santa Fe, New Mexico. We have an established group of vendors who run those background checks under her supervision.
And so it could depend on their load as how quick the check can be made.
I mean, usually, it can get done, and I am, I am 90% confident that if you all want to have this meeting on April 21st, that we can very probably get those background checks done by May 1st.
Just to move things along, I'm fine keeping the 16th.
I think, I think we...
We'll just keep it. Sorry.
I think we ought to stay at the 16th, because I'm concerned that we're going to not allow enough time to do this job properly. And if there's any one thing we'll accomplish in this group is making sure we got the right person.
One issue is universities. You will be shocked to hear that sometimes it takes the university administrations a couple of weeks to get back to you to confirm and give you the answer to a simple question, whether we have the degrees we say we have.
What if, what if we went ahead with the April 21st meeting, and if your background checks did not come in by the May, then we just defer that May meeting till the following?
We need to schedule candidates and get them confirmed for interviews. That would become problematic if we have to call them back.
I think, I'm adamant about staying on the 16th.
I'm fine with that. I don't have any, I just posed the question.
Matt is going to accommodate us.
Thank you, Matt.
Let's vote.
Yeah, let's vote. I'll get the dates.
All in favor, did I make a motion already or not?
Yeah, we seconded.
So all in favor, go ahead and move it. So all in favor of going ahead and moving and staying with the timeline, it's projected presented here, April 16th, for this closed session meeting, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And one more word from me, now that you've done that, and thank you. I'm happy to accommodate your schedule. If you want to start early, if you want to start late that day, so you have a workday in between, I'm happy to accommodate your schedule about when that day you want to schedule a meeting.
I would say we do this, like we do a workshop, workshop meeting schedule, have it in the morning.
Yeah, start it. Is that a good word for you, Matt?
Totally, totally okay with Matt looking at his work schedule and letting us know what works for him.
Yeah, let's see what pops up that day.
Because it's just, it's just the five of us.
Yeah, that's right.
I guess, and a staff member works.
We're going to have a catered lunch.
Yeah.
I would encourage you to decide that pretty soon.
Okay.
And so that you get that on your calendar.
Well, part of, part of that.
On a Thursday, the early, the before lunch would be preferable to after lunch.
Is there a special evening at the office?
Oh, okay.
That's right.
Okay.
As part of that, would our human resources person be part of that group?
You can invite in anyone that you want to. It's, all the information is confidential. It's not unusual to invite the person with HR responsibility into the discussion, but it's up to you.
Okay.
I think she should be involved.
We can make that decision as we get closer to the time for the meeting.
Yep.
All right. Anything, any further business, counsel?
Nope.
Thank you, Ellis. Appreciate your time this morning, and yesterday, too, as well. If no further business, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Means adjourned. Thank you. Have a good day.